Come to order, please. I want to welcome everybody to our regular scheduled board meeting. Is this thing working?
Yeah.
Okay, doesn't sound like it. Anyway, if you will silence any electronic devices you may have. Mr. Sir, would you lead the invocation in place?
I will do, sir. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you today and ask for your guidance and your wisdom and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussions and fill us with your grace as we make decisions that will affect the people here in Walton County. Please continue to remind us that everything we do here today and always and everything that we accomplish is in the pursuit of truth and for the service of the people of Walton County. We do ask, dear Lord, that you give a special blessing on the family of Gene Ryan today, former Walton County Commissioner. At his passing on Saturday, we ask that you bless his wife and his son and give them your grace in all things. We ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mr. Jones, I think we've got some additions and deletions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under Admin, we're asking, under the consent agenda, that we add approval to advertise for a public hearing on September 9th to bring forward $27,000 in the Doggett Canal MSBU fund for dredging the Doggett Canal. These are funds that are surplus from their debt service that build up over time and they utilize them to dredge the canal. All we're asking today is that you approve a public hearing for September 9th to move those funds. Under Admin, both of these requests came yesterday, so we're sorry for the late timing, but they're somewhat important to move forward. We've provided you with a letter from the City of Freeport regarding their fire department and their desire to work with the county, to unify that department into the county. We'll not be asking for any action today other than requesting the board's support staff's efforts to begin some negotiations and discussions with the City of Freeport and, of course, with each of you to determine the best course of action there. Then we received a request from the City Manager of Defeniac Springs yesterday requesting that we send a letter of support to the Department of Economic Opportunity for their application in the Competitive Florida Partnership Program. So we'll ask for you to consider that as well. Mr. Davis has one item, Dan.
I'm asking you to have an executive session on September 9th, 6:00 PM, regarding Martha Redd, based in Walton County.
We mediated the case last week and have an offer on the table we'd like to bring to you at an executive session.
And, Mr. Commissioners, we're asking for two things. We, to correct the error in the total compensation on the contract for the first year because it included the hosting and another module, the actual rebuild came in at $235,000, but when you add the other two modules for that first year of the contract would be $266,920. And then capital improvement budget, this is to fund Legion Park, we came in $10,000 under on the Dothan Access, and we will not get to the Montego Avenue Access this year. So we want to deobligate those funds and basically take care of the boat ramp at Legion Park this year. Those are the only two changes we have.
What's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion, second, approve the additions, and there's no deletions, are there? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Motion on approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Motion in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Public comment.
Yep. Is there any public comments at this time? Come forward, please, state your name for the record, direct your comments to the board.
One for you and one for each. My name is Chester Carter, District 1. My comments are in relation to a request to adopt a resolution for Calford Waterwell, Tab D., Mark Davis, number 140765. The Brunner Well or Calford Well has been declared unsafe as a potable water source. Consider the attachments and delay the resolution until such time the Brunner Well or Calford Well is declared safe and potable. The Florida State Surgeon General will see the documents and be requested to explain why well users were not notified until September the 18th of 2013. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, are you affected by this well? Are you on this well? Are you on this well?
Yes, I'm the Avalorum Taxpayer.
No, no, I mean...
Block 3, Block C, Calford Subdivision.
You're on the well. You use the water, in other words.
Yes. And the attached document of my cancelled check for perpetual use of that well is there in your folder, along with the Perpetual Use Homeowners Association recorded as a state document.
Come forward, Mr. Osborne.
For the record, Alan Osborne, first thing I'll object to is the public comment was supposed to occur before the approval of this consent agenda. And secondly, the time has been changed on the public comments from five minutes to three minutes, and it was the board's policy years ago that we would have five minutes when all the transparency issues came up. That was added both before and after, and now suddenly it's gone. I wanted to tell you before you approve the minutes and ratify your actions of the August 12th meeting, I'd like you to look at the July 8th meeting that I've given you copies of, that's highlighted. In there, there's a discussion about what occurred. I tried to raise my hand during the quasi judicial, but I could not be recognized because I had already spoken, even though I had not used my allotted time. I wanted to object, but I could not, so I had to wait till now. If you see in there, it'll clearly state that in reference to the Sandestin NOPC that you appear to have just signed the minutes on, you're told by your staff when that came up that that NOPC was required for that project. Ms. Bradley told you the proper way to do that NOPC was, or do those changes, was adopt those through NOPC, and that the recommendation to approve it was contingent on the NOPC. Mr. Chapman and Ms. Commander made it clear that they knew that the NOPC was required. Mr. Chapman asked Mr. Dias, and Mr. Dias stated, he said, "The issue on that project is ancillary space, and some are being claimed as ancillary space prior to an NOPC being approved." He recommended it be approved contingent on the approval of the NOPC. Look all through that. On July 8th, July 22nd, in June, everybody said this project could not be approved legally without an NOPC. The NOPC failed, and it should have. It gave special privileges that you have not granted in Sandestin LLC or myself. You're changing definitions, and you've already said you can't do it that way, and you wonder why I'm upset and I want to hold you responsible for it. If you cannot follow the rules that you tell me that you're playing by, how can you expect it to be fair? I think what you've done is just backed yourself into another lawsuit, not for me, but from the people who have asked you to enforce this. Adopting ancillary space, you can adopt a new definition for open space, and you'll probably bring the Sandestin Order back into compliance. That's a heck of a way of enforcing it. I hope the other 3,000 or 4,000 homeowners in there realize that that definition being adopted for everybody would have resulted in a recalculation of commercial space. But I just don't understand how you can ratify today actions that you said were not allowed.
Thank you.
And I continue to request a compliance hearing on my part of the neighborhood.
Okay. Any other public comments? Seeing none, move towards the approval of the consent agenda.
I thought we did.
No, that was additions, wasn't it?
Oh, yeah, that's right. You just approved the agenda with the additions. Oh, okay.
Right.
Okay.
Motion to approve. Motion in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. First request is we need to appoint a member to the Value Adjustment Board to replace Mr. David Smith. Mr. Smith was appointed back in May, but is no longer able to serve. The only requirement for this position is that the individual be a homesteaded property owner in Walton County. You may or may not be prepared to suggest a name today. If not, we can certainly ask you to bring us the name at the next meeting, so whatever your pleasure is.
Have we had anybody that wanted to?
The only one we had earlier was Barbara Chelcutt, but there's an issue with the homesteaded property that's not been cleared up, so we can certainly come back with a recommendation if you'd like, or...
Yeah, that would be good, unless somebody else has an idea.
Okay. We'll work to that end. Next item, we received yesterday a letter from Clayton Adkison on behalf of the City of Freeport. We provided you a copy of that letter. The city is requesting that the county entertain the idea of, I don't like the term "taking over," but for lack of a better term, taking over the City of Freeport Fire Department.
Acquisition.
Acquisition, very good. So today, we're just making you aware of that. Absent any further direction, staff will begin working with the city and, of course, with each of you to determine the best course of action and come back with a recommendation.
Do you want comments today, or you prefer to wait?
I think I'd prefer to wait, and we'll...
Okay, because I've got a few.
Okay, fair enough, and part of what we want to do is make sure we get all those worked into place. So unless the board wishes to discuss it today, that's certainly fine, too.
Give you the opportunity to work on it and meet with us.
Okay, okay. So we'll take that as direction.
Yes.
Okay. Next item, we received yesterday a request from the City of Defeniac to provide them a letter to the Department of Economic Opportunity in support of the City of Defeniac's application to the Competitive Florida Partnership Program. We did not have a draft of that letter, they didn't provide us that with the board's approval. We'll certainly get that and provide it for the chairman to sign.
Can you tell us what that is? Do you have any idea?
The request is from the City of Defeniac for an application to the Competitive Florida Partnership.
I understood that part.
That's the extent of the information. They're seeking a grant through the DEO.
Is it part of that natural gas pump thing?
Don't know.
No? Okay, all right, thank you.
Is there any commitment on the part of the county?
No, well, I would, we would not commit, other than saying we support their efforts, but we can certainly get some more information.
I'd like to know what their efforts are first.
Okay.
That would be helpful.
Can we get somebody, because they're needing this according to what Sarah told me they need tomorrow. Can somebody get us a little more information, so if we will just hold that, we'll come back to it. Next item, Mr. Chairman is Kate Daniel from the West Florida Regional Planning Council is here regarding some roadways identified outside of the TPO, which they work with to help us acquire funding for. I believe she has provided a map, and Public Works has worked with her on that to determine the appropriate roads to be there. Kate's here and tell you more about it.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. I'm Kate Daniel with the West Florida Regional Planning Council. I'm here today to present the Rural Work Program, which is a liaison program with the Florida Department of Transportation regarding rural infrastructure and rural road needs outside the urbanized area. You have two maps in your agenda packet, and the first, which is on the screen, is the FDOT Five-Year Work Program for fiscal years 2015 to 2019. And you'll see that there are eight projects listed on the work program, and so these will be the projects that will be funded in the next five fiscal years. On the table, you'll have a description of the year in which these projects will be completed and the estimated project cost. The second map that you have is the list of Rural Work Program requests. This map was developed with input from your Walton County Public Works Department, as well as input from the City of Paxton City Council. Since this map was developed, we have received a request for two additional projects to be added, which are not yet represented on the map. These projects are East Indian Creek Ranch Road from Bruce Creek Bridge to County Road 288. This length will be 14,626 feet with an estimated project cost of $1,973,276. The second project, which has been requested to add to this map, is West Indian Creek Ranch Road from Bruce Creek Bridge to US Highway 331 at a length of 7,603 feet with an estimated project cost of $1,199,396 feet. At this time, we can review the requests on this map, and if you approve this map to go forward with the two additional requests that I've listed, then we will present this to FDOT for them to consider as they develop their next five-year work program.
And also, Commissioners, we utilize this when we're working with our scrap and SCOFT grants as well, so we use it for support of those requests also.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Next item, Commissioners, is a request to obtain sealed quotes from vendors to purchase and remove the modular office building located at 97 Montgomery Circle, which is the old engineering building. By your action of approving the consent agenda, that the action to surplus that building was on the consent agenda, so now we're asking to receive quotes to purchase and remove that building from its location.
Can it be used again for anything, or is it...
I would hate to try to move it. I think it's to the point where it needs to be retired.
Scrap metal, can we sell the scrap metal?
Well, that's probably what it's going to be down to.
Yeah.
That's what this motion is supposed to, for somebody to purchase.
Yeah.
Okay.
Most approved.
Motion in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. Next item is regarding the right-of-way policy. We presented that to you at the last board meeting for comments. Those comments, which were provided, have been included in the final draft, which you have before you. Absent any other comments or suggestions, we would recommend your approval.
I don't have any other. I think the suggestions were good. I can't see the red. Here we are.
Motion to approve.
Motion in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Next item, Commissioners, is regarding the mosquito, North Walton mosquito control building. If you recall, at the last meeting, we had some discussion regarding the low bidder and their desire to withdraw their bid, which you accepted. Instruction was to move to the next low bidder, which was GLC Contracting. So this request is to approve the contract with GLC for invitation to bid number 014-012 for the construction of the new North Walton mosquito control building.
Motion to approve.
And I'll second, but just remind me, for the sake of memory, where's this building going, because I know one time we talked about next to the animal shelter and then not. Where is it, where's the final site for it?
It's in that general location, just west, yeah, excuse me, just east of that corner, corners there, near the Sheriff's Office gas pump location.
Okay.
Where's the money coming from to build that new building?
Out of their reserves.
They have an own separate, they have a fund.
State fund, yeah.
Yes. Got a motion in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Next item, Mr. Chairman, is the request to approve a change order, the contract 014-011 for County Road 183 improvements to CW Roberts to decrease the original bid in an amount of $4,251.38 due to deletions to the existing contract specifications. There were some guardrails in the bid that we determined weren't necessary from a safety and engineering standpoint, so by removing those would reduce this contract by $4,251.38.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. The next three items are somewhat connected regarding the RFQ for engineering services to provide review of applications for coastal armoring. The first item we'll ask you to take action on is part of this process was to determine a negotiate, what the fee would be for those services. We negotiated with Taylor Engineering, who we will ask you to approve in a moment for $4,500 per application, which would be borne by the applicant. So our first action is asking you to approve the figure of $4,500 to review the applications from the coastal engineering standpoint for armoring structures on the beach.
Is that moved?
Motion in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Next item is Taylor Engineering was the most qualified applicant in responding to RFQ, so we request that we award RFQ 014-010 to Taylor Engineering for Coastal Engineering Services.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Next request is to approve the resolution that establishes the $4,500 fee that we just approved as the appropriate fee to apply to the coastal armoring permits.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And finally, we request you approve the contract with Taylor Engineering, which will put them under contract to provide those services as we've previously discussed.
So moved.
There you go.
Motion in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Next item...
Oh, yes.
Sorry. I'm sorry, it's just the only way to do it. I know it was cumbersome, but we got there.
You got there.
Requesting to advertise for bids to purchase a backup generator and transfer switch with the capacity to run the new Public Works building. The idea is that in time of storm, it'll keep them up and running, those not to exceed $42,000. The funds to pay for that will be transferred from the road materials account, from the Public Works building, to the Public Works building account.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Wilmer, can you come up here, please? Wilmer, will this tie into the gas pumps and diesel pumps that are out there, or is this strictly for that structure that's out there?
It's just for us, yes, sir, and the server, it's going to run the phones and the computers. We already have one for the fuel pump.
Okay.
But it's not big enough to operate our side.
All right, hang tight a minute. We've got a motion in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Wilmer, there's another thing I wanted to ask you.
Take a seat up front.
He told you to hang tight. You know what hang tight means?
Know what hang tight is? Now, my understanding is that you're a big Gator fan.
Oh, no doubt.
There's no doubt, and that you and Commissioner Infill have a gentleman's bet going on about this.
We do.
Can you explain the parameters of that?
The board meeting after the fourth game of the year, I don't really know the date you will see Commissioner Infill in a Gator outfit.
Because that is... Playing Alabama in Tuscaloosa.
Yes, sir.
Uh-huh, okay.
Should Alabama be lucky enough to beat Florida? What are the consequences then?
We're going to dress Buddy Rat up.
Buddy's not in that mix.
But, no, sir, I will have to suffer.
I'll get you some Alabama gear.
So, yeah, I've had it.
Thank you, Wilmer.
Hang tight, Wilmer.
You need a motion for that, Mr. Chairman?
No, I don't think we need a motion.
Yeah. Next item, we have some very outdated equipment that our surveying crews are using, so this is a request to purchase some surveying equipment, GIS equipment that they use to better serve and do the things they do from a surveying standpoint.
Motion to approve.
Motion in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, last item, and this isn't an add-on, but just by way of announcement, about a year ago, we began the process of negotiating with Love's Travel Stops, and on September the 5th, they will have their grand opening at 11:00 a.m. Obviously, they're at the side in Mossy Head, so just want to make sure the public's aware of that, and the Commissioners and the more, the merrier, so please put it on your calendar to join us for the Love's grand opening on September the 5th at 11:00 a.m.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Okay. Mr. Bagby.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. The first item on the agenda under the TDC is a request approval of the FY 2015 Strategic Plan. This is a process that started over six months ago. We got input from the community, from leadership of the county, and it has been recommended for approval by the TDC itself.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, the next item is a request to approve the contract. Y'all approved the bid last time, but we didn't have the contract completed to award Backwood Bridges LLC to work on the Dothan Avenue walkover improvement project.
Motion to approve.
Motion in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And we don't have any updates this meeting. The fourth item would be the TDC Web Platform Rebuild Contract. You approved not to exceed $250,000, which would have covered the web rebuild, but we noticed in the contract that it had been added a module and a hosting section, and that would take the figure up to $266,920. So we're just asking that you approve it not to exceed $266,920.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Opposed, motion carries.
And our last item is a request to amend the capital improvement budget for this year in the amount of sixty thousand. Again, Dothan came in ten thousand under, and we will not be getting to any improvements at Montego. And that totals approximately sixty thousand dollars, which we would like to spend on the Legion Park boat ramp construction.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Subject to your questions is all we have for this time.
Thank you. Mr. Davis.
Thank you, commissioners. The first item I have is the item Mr. Chester discussed. It's a request to approve a resolution establishing at the highest and best use for the property on which the Calford well water lines and well actually exist. Now, I want to be clear that we're only establishing the highest and best use and possible conveyance of the granting an easement and the fifty by fifty square around the well itself. The surrounding property would not be conveyed. So it's just the well and the, and granting an easement to the well. And this, this is a result of a request from the homeowners association.
And how does Mr.?
Mr. Carter's comments, how does that tie in with that?
How does it tie in?
Don't know, other than there has been some concerns about the water quality of the well, but.
And who, who are we conveying the easement to?
To the homeowners association, because I understand it.
And do we know why they want to have that?
I have not discussed it with them. I don't know if.
I can tell you a little bit of history is this well serves a number of residences in the homeowners association. Well sits on our property. And it's the Calford Park area. And so somebody's got to have the responsibility of maintaining the well because the health department looks at it as a public water source because it's serving multiple residences. So it was either gonna fall to us or the homeowners association. We felt it better over time that the homeowners association would have it on the well. And then that'd be their responsibility to maintain it, do the water testing and those type of things as opposed to the county being in the, in the water business on a very limited manner there.
When is this water supply the park?
I don't believe so.
Yeah, I don't think it does.
I don't, no, I don't think there's any water that goes there, so I don't believe so.
I see people shaking heads.
Could I ask Mr. Carter to? I believe you were opposed, opposed to this conveyance? Mr. Carter, if you, Mr. Carter.
Mr. Carter.
Mr. Carter. Come to the podium, please. Come up here, please. If, I guess my question is, if this enables your neighborhood association to address the problems, you're, are you part of that association?
No. I'm a member of the original association per the document on the attachment.
Yes, I'm not sure I understand the nature of your objection to this, if this is going to help improve the quality of the water.
Well, to delineate the association, the state document, Corporation Number N two-two-nine-three-seven, I'm a member of that association. But the Calford Water Well Users Association, which is now a proposed, a proposed association, I am not a member of that. I said that I would go along with that concluding that the well was cleaned up prior to conveyance. And now the well is still non-potable. And the county document says, the county commission finds the highest and best use for said property with its natural well as a source of potable water for an independent water provider. My, my protest is that we're giving the provider an unsafe well. And that's documented by Florida Department of Health, two thousand and eleven and two thousand and thirteen, with two tests and to date that the well is still non-potable. And nothing's been done to clean it up.
Mr. Davis, is, have we had a recent test on the water?
I know there was one in two thousand and thirteen. I haven't seen one since.
And this, as he mentions, this organization that we're trying to convey it to is not yet in existence?
I, I thought the LLC, and I don't have it in front of me, I thought the LLC was formed prior to them asking for it to be conveyed. And the purpose of forming a separate LLC is the LLC would actually run the, the well, homeowners association, and the homeowners would pay for the services to the LLC, yes, sir.
How are you getting water now?
Man?
How are you getting water now?
I have a motor home that carries one hundred gallons of potable water that I transport back and forth from my home, parked on Lot Three Block C. So I, I don't need the water. I clean my fish with, with the water that they came from, the river water.
Mr. Chairman, I suggest that we get answers to those two questions before we take any action. Number one, is there a legitimate LLC in existence? Number two, what is the, the status of the quality of the water?
Be happy to.
What is our responsibility?
Thank you, Mr. Carter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Commissioners, the second item is a request to, for an executive session to be held on September ninth at three PM regarding Harris v Walton County, case number two thousand and eleven, CA ten twenty-seven. You have the requesting letter in your packet.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And third item is mentioned earlier is another executive session to be held on September ninth at two thirty regarding Margarettan and V Walton County, two thousand and thirteen, CA one fifty-four. And again, you should have the letter in your packet.
So moved. Motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, commissioners. All I have.
Okay, Ms. Bowers, if you'll come forward, please.
How are y'all today?
Aye.
Understand you have questions for me?
In your request for the letter from the board to, of supporting your, to send a letter to the DEO supporting your application for competitive Florida partnership program, could you just brief the board on what that is and what the letter would?
What this is, is we're seeking economic development strategy from Department of Economic Opportunity. And what they need to see is that we have community support. And one of the letters that's requested comes from the Board of County Commissioners, that you do support our efforts and, you know, would assist with, you know, any implementation or strategy that we could come up with. I'm not asking for any financial support or anything like that. It takes a community for economic development and various organizations, and the county is one organization. So they can help, they're gonna help you strategize and plan. Okay. We just weren't sure. We didn't know what.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
Is this, they're, are they gonna give you grant money? Or are they just gonna provide you with personnel to assist in the planning?
At this point, is my understanding would be personnel. But if, you know, funds are needed, that would be a possibility as well.
Any other questions? Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Okay, we're moving into the public hearing. The first one up is a request to approve the annual rate resolution for the fire rescue assessment. Is there any public comments concerning that?
Mr. Chairman, if I may just make a comment on each of these five public hearing requests. All of the recommended rates remain the same as they were previous year.
Okay. In reference to the fire rescue assessment, any public comment?
Do we have to go make a motion to go when?
We need to open a public hearing.
Yeah, I make a motion, we open the public hearing?
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Again, any public comments on the fire rescue assessment? See none?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Motion to close the, can we do them all in one?
No, you can keep the public hearing open and have all five on the one public hearing.
All right. The second one on here is the annual rate resolution for Doggett Canal Assessment. Is there any public comments? See none?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Third one is a annual rate resolution for Imperial Lakes Assessment. Is there any public comments concerning that?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The annual rate resolution for Four Mile Village Assessment, is there any public comment concerning that? See none?
Motion to approve.
A motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Annual rate resolution for the Leisure Lake Assessment, is there any public comment concerning that? See none?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We need a motion to go out.
Motion to close public hearing.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, Commissioner Meadows.
Yes, thank you. Y'all are familiar with Helen McCall Park. We need to make three hundred thousand dollars worth of improvements there. We'd like to, everything is ready to go. We'd like to get started on them. However, we were counting on the three hundred thousand dollars as part of the loan that was gonna come through for the sports complex. Since that's not done yet, we need the three hundred thousand dollars now. We would pay it back once we got the loan. But we need the three hundred thousand dollars now so we can go ahead and get started on these much-needed improvements at Helen McCall. And we don't have enough in the impact fee, recreation impact fee at this point to really do this. So I was asking that, that this money be taken out of the, whatever fund we can take it out of, maybe the landfill fund. And it would be paid back once we got the, once we got the loan.
Commissioner Enfield. Mr. Chairman, I too share Ms. Meadows' concern. I mean, we, we voted to do this. We've been patient trying to get this thing moving along. And I think that, that we should be ready to go today. And I would like to make a motion that we take the three hundred thousand dollars from the contingency fund so that this afternoon she can start moving forward with this project. I think it's important. We all agreed and voted in favor of it previously. I'd like to see it go forward. This is, I think it's important to all of Walton County to do this. And I'd like to see us start right now.
Good, good. Well, I think Brad and the boys are ready to go, and the ladies. So.
With the same stipulation, that when the, when the loan comes in, the money would go to the contingency line item. I was gonna ask about that.
Sure, yeah, it would.
Can anybody advise where we are on negotiations on that piece of property with the sports park?
We've had a couple of conversations with the seller, Mr. Davis, and they are waiting on their appraisal. Middle of last week had a conversation, they've still not gotten it.
They don't have their appraisals back yet?
Well, they, according to what they told me, they have it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. All right, we got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. The little kids will, will love you. Yes, great, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Commander.
Yes, sir. My first item is, I did tell y'all last month I would be bringing this back once a month until we actually did something. And I have some dates here to look at for the landfill workshop. We have Monday, September the eighth at five. That would be right after the budget hearing at the South Annex. Or maybe Monday the fifteenth, or September the twenty-second, after our final budget workshop, which would be up here. I might have a conflict, because I have a consortium executive session conference call on the eighth. But I'm fine with either the fifteenth or the twenty-second.
From, from a staff position?
Uh huh.
Twenty-second would work well. We're moving this thing along real well. We're getting, collecting data and getting it ready to present. But if, if the twenty-second works for the board, that would be great.
I will, then I will, I'll make the motion that we hold it on the twenty-second at five o'clock, right after our final budget hearing.
Where's, up here, up here, at five o'clock, up here, okay.
Five-thirty, yeah. Five-thirty, okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, sure.
There is something in the statute with regard to the board meeting on a date that you're holding the budget hearing, that you can't have anything that could possibly conflict with it. I'm concerned that, that by doing that, you may have a problem then with the state accepting our budget submission.
I know it's in the Administrative Procedures Act, and I was sitting here wrecking my brain trying to remember if it was actually in the statute as well. But I'll check, and then if you'll pick an alternate date if we can't do it, that will.
The fifteenth then?
That would be helpful. Yeah. We're not subject to the Administrative Procedures Act, but I know that provision is in there, and it may very well be in the statute.
There is one that specifically deals with your budget submission to the state and the holding of that and that, and that hearing only on that particular date.
That's correct. I'll, I'll check and make sure. But if you'll do that, just pick that date and an alternate date.
Do you want the, Larry, do you want the fifteenth, or you want to go to the first Monday in October, the sixth?
Let's go the first Monday in October.
First Monday in October.
We're clear with the budget, no issues on that.
If that works with everyone, that'd be great.
But we'll do it.
First Monday in October.
I will.
October the sixth.
And you want to have it when? At five o'clock?
Does it?
October sixth.
Does it have to be at five o'clock?
No.
Hold it during the day?
Yes, ma'am.
Hold it during the day. What you think?
Sandy, you got the furthest to come?
Yeah.
Nine o'clock? Or seven-thirty?
Yeah, right, right, yeah. Let me see here.
Oh, nominal fee, you can.
Yeah, yeah, really. Well, you know, the only thing about these workshops is, are we interested in hearing from the public? If we are, we need to have them, you know.
I think this is, to me, this is more staff and us discussing what we, we, you know, staff giving us updates on the landfill, what's going on out there, what the problems are, what, you know. And, and us looking at, again, I just, I have always, I want a discussion on what the highest and best use.
Why can't we do it instead of having a whole separate meeting and have, you know, why can't we do it on the fourteenth of October before the, the board meeting, like at three o'clock?
I'm not sure an hour is sufficient time.
I'd say we're gonna at least take two hours.
Serious?
Well.
Don't know.
We don't know, but we don't want to limit ourselves. At least we could, you know, if it didn't take an hour, then we could take a break, and you could feed us all.
Two hours talking about garbage?
Garbage, recycling, landfill?
Well, surely we can do it in an hour. I mean, I mean, I don't care. Two o'clock is fine.
Two-thirty, let's compromise.
Two-thirty, yeah.
How's that?
What date?
Can't imagine that we'd have two hours worth of discussion between staff and the board. But I may be wrong.
October the fourteenth?
Yeah.
At two-thirty, is that?
Yeah.
At two-thirty. Is that good?
It's good with this.
Do we need a motion? I'll make that motion. I've made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Okay.
October fourteenth, two-thirty.
My next item is, most of you are aware and have been aware, the Fish Hatchery Project has been on our list of NERDA projects and a project that we have been trying to bring forward since the oil spill. You have in your packet some information about the, the hatchery. And we need to have a resolution supporting it that will help us, and when we go look at NIFWIF and, and NERDA asking for funds. In here, in the packet, if you've read it, it tells about the Fish Hatchery, the, the little hatchlings, the plant nursery, which we would be providing much-needed plants for the restoration of the Gulf Coast. Water quality laboratory, state-of-the-art here. And also the oyster. I'm particularly interested in the oyster shell recycling to help build reefs out in the Gulf. I do have Brett Boston here. Wave your hand. There he is. If anybody has, you want to come forward, Brett? If anybody has any questions about this project?
Okay, so we're, we're actually talking about a specific project, not just fish hatcheries in general. We're talking about this one.
This is a sister project, and as always, and Brett can tell you better than I can, a sister project with the, with the hatchery in Pensacola. They've always been planned to be together, to work together.
Right.
My partner in crime, Julie Carroll, so.
Hello, good morning.
Okay, who's gonna speak first?
I'll go first.
All right, identify yourself for the record.
Thanks for having me here this morning. The two projects have been available to. The two projects have been available to us since the early restoration funds. We actually, when we filed for the Pensacola Hatchery, we always envisioned having a second facility in the Panhandle to take the fish from that facility, some of them, and grow them out. Additionally, one of the high priority items for the Panhandle in the long-term restoration has been a nursery. A source of quality marine plants has been sorely lacking, and this facility would offer that as well. Additionally, on the site would be a water quality testing laboratory with all of the impacts of the spill, and those being long-term impacts that'll need to be monitored, plus all of your stormwater intrusion, and all of the things you have to do to monitor the water quality in the Panhandle. All of that goes to University of Florida, illustrious institution, however, it's a long shipment and it's a month to get your stuff back. So, putting a water quality testing lab for the benefit of the Panhandle, as well as a nursery for the benefit of the Panhandle, are very high priority items, I think, in terms of the long-term conservation of this incredible resource we have in Walton County and throughout the Panhandle of Florida. So, we have put together a partnership package. The state itself, Fish and Wildlife Commission and others are looking at, and the Wildlife Foundation of Florida are looking at a companion hatchery and facility there that we would be looking at state dollars to do, and then looking for the water quality lab, a oyster recycling facility, and this nursery for plants which are self-sustaining. We've provided the economic package to you to show that these are not long-term drains on the county resources, these are self-sustaining operations. We have a similar facility in New Savanna Beach, and it's been running fantastically for five years, zero impact on taxpayers other than that initial piece. So, just ask your consideration, at least on the resolution, to support a partnership long-term on this. And then, we would be jointly seeking with your local partners that are listed, the appropriate funding source that might be available to us for these funds.
One of the things that I ask when I talk with these gentlemen was that make sure that the land that they are going to put this on complies with the land use, and the planning needs to take a look at it. Did y'all talk to planning about that?
We did, we met with Planning Department, and they pulled the different uses, and I believe, I haven't seen a copy of it, but I believe there's a letter from Planning.
Is there, okay, so this site that they have is good to go for this use? Okay, okay, thanks.
We would want to point out that on the conceptual map that you might have, the lines aren't perfect, and it's just, I think we're intruding on someone else's property, but that's a.
I don't think we actually included that map, I think we did the rendering of.
Yeah, we have some conceptual.
It's just a rendering at this point, so those lines can be tweaked as we move forward with the project.
But there are many benefits to the county, economic-wise, of course. Not only provide jobs for building it, people working there, but then as, you know, for the fish, to provide, you know, fish, and to our restaurants, I mean, and to our recreational fishermen, it just kind of trickles on down, the benefits not only to Walton County, but the Panhandle as a whole. And if y'all agree, I would ask that, and I'll make the motion that we support this resolution supporting the project.
Let me ask a question concerning that. The funding is through NERDA, is that where you're going to try and get the funding, or you're going to be coming to the board?
No.
This is a, the funding sources, as you know, Mr. Chairman, and I think Commissioner Commander can attest, it's a kind of a moving source on where funds are now. Currently, the existing funds that are available have come through the criminal penalties from transoceanic and also from Deepwater Horizon. That's a two-point-seven billion dollar set of fines set up through 2019. That's what's called NIFWIF, National Fish and Wildlife Foundation is managing that. So, those are the only real legitimate available funds, we're starting to see some additional fines come forward. So, our approach would be to find that balance of sources where we can to find the funding source. So, the resolution is saying, we are supportive, it's a priority project, that gives us a lot more latitude in saying, yes, the county really wants this here. We don't want to be in a situation where it's not a priority for you guys, and trying to go and talk with those national funding sources.
Okay, thank you.
NIFWIF or NERDA, I think we've applied to NERDA, and of course, NIFWIF, I believe we've been told, maybe is a better source, you know, as if it is, you know, they move it from one day to the next.
And who knows where the funds end up, so it's really these pots of funding, as, again, as Commissioner Commander can tell you.
We can ask every pot and see which one can get it out of.
Just shaking pots, yes, sir.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My third item is request to re-advertise a general commercial text amendment and ordinance amending Walton County Comprehensive Plan, general commercial to allow the exception to the location criteria in South Walton, providing for severity and an effective date. I was asked to bring this back to the board, and I believe it died for a lack of a second.
This is one of the two items that, or, yeah, one of the two items that died for a lack of section, second, which means there was no action taken, so it can be brought within the one-year period. It's a request to re-advertise and put it back on the agenda for the next meeting.
Yes.
Discussion, I think the reason it died for a lack of a second is because I don't think it's a good idea to blanket general commercial which includes light industrial anywhere in South Walton. There is, and there's a special clause in there for, just for Golsby Road. And that's why I think that it didn't get a second, because it's, I don't think it's a good idea. It would allow general commercial and light industrial in areas in South Walton where they have previously, to this date, never been allowed. So, we're going to be looking at land use changes in the middle of neighborhoods and on neighborhood streets for these types of uses. And so, it's going to be difficult to, it's just, it's going to create another controversy and adversarial situation in neighborhoods are already overstressed by traffic, and so, that's, I think that's why it didn't get a second, but.
Okay, any other discussion?
I was asked to bring it back, I brought it back.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Nay. Nay.
Motion carries.
Commissioners, I just want to make sure that Tina got the vote, because she get, okay, you got the vote. Thank you.
Commissioner, let's see, is that it, Ms. Sarah?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Commissioner Enfield, you have anything?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, real quickly, I would like to recognize Gary Madison, longtime county employee who has revisited us, and I would just ask one thing from him that, for the October fourteenth board meeting, would he work with Wilmer to get him the appropriate crimson attire?
I'll be wearing a gator outfit that day, no matter what, no matter what happens. So, you know, there are some gators in the room. Mac, you get a raise.
Commissioner? Commissioner Pridgen?
Nothing.
Yeah, nothing. Commissioners, I have this topic that I wanted to try to discuss. I think y'all are pretty much aware that the number of times that we've started our quasi-judicial hearings in the afternoon after a lengthy board agenda resulting in long hours. It's, and I'm proposing that we create a separate date for those QJ items. So, it'll be a lot easier on us instead of sitting there for four or five hours in a board meeting, then another four or five hours with the hearings. And it's also, I think, would be much fairer to the attorneys and other staff members they bring over, because it saves them some money too in the process. But I would, I think I would much rather like to sit there and listen just to that one type of hearing instead of trying to put all these lone processes in place concerning these things we have to address. So, I'm just asking, it's for discussion, see what the rest of you think, as far as selecting a separate day just to handle the QJ and legislative.
Mr. Davis, am I correct that the only ones that are required to be heard after five o'clock are the QJs that have an impact on the comp plan?
That's correct.
But the others could be heard basically at any other time during the day?
That's my understanding.
Or could even be heard as part of our, the Funiac Springs meetings?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Are you suggesting that, most of the, are you suggesting that we, because right now we have, you know, if it's a land use hearing pertaining to South Walton, we hold it in South Walton?
No, I just, I just getting clarification.
I mean, I was asking, I think.
Well, you know, I think we talked about it earlier on, that we try to hold these things depending on what side of the pond it was. And most of them's going to be across the bay, there's no doubt about that, so.
I think, I think though, you know, they're QJs, they're mostly, there's a lot of public comment for the most part, so I think you need, you've got to have them after five, I think, because a lot of people work and can't make it there till five, five-thirty. Most of them are in South Walton, so you're looking at another meeting that y'all are going to have to drive down to in South Walton. I agree that some of these, I agree that there's specific ones that would be good to have a separate meeting on, but, you know, nine out of ten of them are, you know, pretty much regular things. So, I would like to see it, if you have a subject where you have two or three opposing sides, and they all have attorneys, and you know that it's going to be a long, drawn-out thing, that we schedule them on a separate date. Instead of all of them, I just, I'm just trying to forego another scheduled meeting.
Wayne, Mac? Is that possible?
You need a week, you need a week between.
It is, however, I will tell you, there are times when we need to go to the Planning Commission, you don't have that large of a crowd, and when you go to the BCC, you have a larger crowd. So, sometimes it's very difficult to judge how controversial one will be. Obviously, there are some that we know will be just from past history, and so, those we could discuss setting aside a certain date. One of the issues is we have to have enough time to advertise these, so it may be a little bit delayed from our normal process when we have these meetings like this.
Mr. Chairman, just to remind the board, we have a provision in place to have, ask you to hold that additional meeting, and I believe on one occasion, we came and based on what went on at the Planning Commission meeting, which we discuss after one to determine whether it looks like it's going to be a lengthy meeting and may need to be moved. But one of the issues that we've ran into is that the items that are going on, for instance, the, your agenda for two weeks from today, we can look at those, but what we've had happen more than one occasion is, an item you heard today, you continue to that meeting, or two or three, or at a request of an applicant. So, all of a sudden, what looked to be this meeting turns into this.
Right.
So, there's, you know, we are putting some effort into looking at what's coming out of the Planning Commission and coming before you, but that does get a little bit skewed when we look at what we have carryover from today's meeting to that meeting.
Remind me again, when does the Planning Commission meet?
First Thursday of the month.
First Thursday?
I believe it.
And you say that would be up?
Second Thursday, I'm sorry.
You think, our regular board meeting at the South End is on the second Tuesday. You think the third Tuesday wouldn't give us enough time?
Commissioners, I hate to say this, because it's just me, but I have school board on the first and third Tuesdays. That's why we had suggested the Mondays, and one other thing I want, yeah, one of the things I want you to consider is, and one, correct me, but we're getting a significant increase in the number of applications too. It's not, I mean, it's not, it's, the volume is increasing pretty significantly, and that was another one of the reasons we were talking about the special.
I think the Monday, the fourth Monday, before this meeting here.
What does that do for you advertising?
We somewhat adopted a policy that we're not going to advertise items to come to this board until they've cleared the Planning Commission.
Right, and it's, it would be a little bit delayed, and also, we're going to, if we're having one meeting a month, right now we have two meetings a month, we're bringing new items. So, that one meeting a month is going to be a fairly long agenda, and so, when we do that, would it be wise, would it be wise for just maybe Larry and I and Mac and maybe Mark to meet and figure out something to bring back to the board and say, this is something we want to propose to you? I know that we're meeting with Larry on some of the advertising before we advertise and what's going on, kind of briefing him about these cases, which are giving us a chance to kind of look over and talk about them, and talk about the potential length of them. But there is a lag, because we have to advertise and so forth. My fear about, one meeting a month is, it's going to be, it'll be a long meeting for you, because they'll all be on one meeting.
Yep.
Well, but yes, but if they're stuck where we are now, our meetings will be even longer. I mean, you know, I understand where Bill's coming from, after what, our meeting adjourned the other night at ten-eighteen. And I know it was an exceptional day, but we started at two o'clock that afternoon. You know, it's not fair to the people we're serving, it's not fair to us, you know, to go that many hours. Of course, I do understand we're getting better chairs, which is going to help immensely, thank you, admin, we appreciate it, which is going to help us, but, you know, after you've gone so many hours.
From a staff position, we're good either way you choose to go.
One of the things too, if you notice, like today, quasi-judicial items, you know, there's a plat on there. I mean, we, I mean, we can, you know, there's certain things that we could just take during the normal course of a meeting. I think, you know, I would, I would rather see it on a Monday night before this meeting, because this meeting is typically not very long and drawn out. Now, the meetings down in South Walton on the second Tuesday are typically real long, so I don't think you want to go back-to-back, Monday night and then Tuesday night, being at, so, that would be my suggestion, is just split it up.
If we did the second Monday, which would be the night before this meeting, or the first Monday, would that give us time to advertise from Planning Commission?
That'd have to be the fourth Monday if it was after, if it was before this meeting.
I mean, we keep hashing around in different directions here. I think it'd be a good idea for staff to meet with, Larry meet with staff and come up with something we can. We keep setting dates here and moving this and moving that, you know, we don't, I don't, I don't know if we fully understand what.
Well, and come up with, maybe come up with, how many items have you got in the process now, and how many are going to pop out, and?
Right, and the plats, that's a very good point, the plats are sort of run the mill, kind of plats, those can potentially come, I would hope, at any time, because usually, there's just a formality to.
We'll run through some thoughts.
I think that'd be good for staff and admin to work together. These are the ones that's, you know, the issue's not, go through fairly simple, but when you get, other projects are going to take some time.
That is exactly right.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Okay, thank, Ms. Lee Moore. Ms. Moore, I believe you have a lengthy PowerPoint.
Yes.
We've seen it, so you might want to hit the highlights.
All right, I will, I'm happy to do that. Good morning. I actually have a few things to hand you, not much new information. Two larger maps, they're easier to see. The phase maps, I understand, are difficult to see in that small of a format, so I just printed them out for you larger. There are also some new estimates for costs that we received yesterday, and I'll go over that, and a letter of support from the Historic Inlet Beach Neighborhood Association. I know it was emailed to you, but it was late, came in late, so I just wanted to make sure that you had it. So, I will blow through the presentation, I know you can read and you've seen it, just for a little bit of benefit of the audience and you as well, I'll just hit a few highlights. The committee came together back late last year, 2013, and it originated from the developers seeing that all of this new development was coming in and felt like it would be, there would be some, the first thing that came up were safety issues that could come up, with having that much residential and commercial intertwined so closely, and also, on both sides of a very busy state highway. So, the scope of the project, as we fleshed it out, ended up being a short segment of 30A from east of Rosemary Beach up to the intersection of 98, and then US 98 from Watersound Parkway to the east to the county line. And the goal was really, as we, as we went through this and dug further into it, was to create a landscape and infrastructure that could really serve as a model, for one, for our community and other communities, when we do have these elements that come together. And also, to really improve the safety elements of the area as it changes so rapidly, and absolutely make it a more beautiful entryway into South Walton. So, the committee membership, there's a list there in. So, the, the committee membership, um, there's a list there in your, in your packet, so I won't read every one. Um, I became involved because of my involvement in, in the past in, uh, similar landscape project and as well, um, being on the board of the Scenic Corridor Association. Um, and we have a lot of other representatives on the twenty-one member committee, from developers in the area to, um, local community, uh, folks and leaders and nonprofit representatives as well. Our landscape designer, um, is Scott Smith with Brickman Group, and, and I just wanna give him a shout out. He has done a tremendous amount of work on the design and most of it has been, uh, pro bono. Uh, he has gotten excited about the project and, and loves being a part of it and has generously done that. Um, and we've also had, uh, Terry Anderson from Anderson Engineering and Robert Carroll from McNeil Carroll, they've done a lot of engineering work, um, that has also been pro bono as well. Um, so, there are several people here today that have been involved with the project, um, or supporters of the project. If I can ask you just to stand real quick, I won't introduce everybody, um, but we've got a, a good representative group here. And we appreciate them taking the time to come to the meeting. So, there are a lot, there are a few different aspects of the project. Uh, the primary ones are safety improvements, um, pathways, uh, for cyclists and pedestrians and then, um, some beautification aspects of the process, project as well. Um, one of the aspects is safe crossing of US ninety-eight. And, um, that I think will be a little further out into the future. We're doing some feasibility studies on different options for that right now. Uh, but, but that will come up, I think, um, you know, in the near future. We just need some time to further, uh, flesh that out. So, the need for the project, obviously, um, you've seen the map that was in here, there's, there's a lot of development coming in. The, the things that are coming out of the ground already are scheduled to be completed, um, within the next, I'd say, nine months. Um, and with June twenty fifteen sort of being the, the final, uh, for the Rosemary Point development. And we have a lot of also residential coming in. Um, and you, I'm sure you're very familiar with Origins, uh, but that's gonna be thirteen hundred plus homes in the next five to seven years, and that's just north of this intersection. Saint Joe has been very involved in the project, they're very interested in it and very supportive. Um, they see this intersection as being very much an attraction for, uh, guests and residents in their, uh, in their development there at Origins, it's very easily accessed from there. So, uh, so we just have a lot changing, I can barely keep the map up to date. Every time I drive by, there's a new sign, uh, going up. So, um, that area is changing and has changed and will continue to drastically and quickly. Have a little bit in here about plant materials and, and a little snapshot of the design. Um, that was more just for your benefit to get a better feel for the project. The, the multi-use paths, the two phases that were, or two aspects of the project we're coming to you about today are, um, the safety aspects, um, primarily around multi-use paths, uh, with the high rate of speed in that area, um, on ninety-eight. And then, of course, with just the congestion in the area that will come. Um, we're proposing multi-use paths on both sides of the road, both on that small stretch of thirty A and along US ninety-eight. Um, and not through the entire scope of the project, but where it makes sense to have those pathways. And, uh, we're proposing a ten-foot wide asphalt path. Um, we, we're getting more feedback, um, from DOT about how that design can look. But, we're hoping to stripe it and divide it for pedestrians on one side and cyclists on the other. There will still be cyclist lanes on US ninety-eight for high-speed cyclists, but, um, but that's the, sort of the concept there. And we are looking at, um, the feasibility, we don't know if it will be feasible, of a pedestrian underpass at that intersection of thirty A and ninety-eight. Um, we're hopeful that it will, we really feel strongly that something is needed there. Uh, but again, there's more engineering work to be done to even decide if that's feasible and then to start looking at if it is, um, is it cost feasible, um, to do? So, more, more to come in the future on that. We listed the benefits here, I think the benefits are, are, uh, pretty widespread. It benefits us both from a tourism standpoint, um, and from residents, um, part-time and full-time residents. Um, safety improvements always benefit us and, um, we wanna get ahead of the curve on, on that side. Also, a lot of concern for people in that area, not so much people going through that area because they like it, is the high speed of traffic. Um, but, as I said, it's changing. And so, while we had sort of a sleepy, um, open area there, it is, it is no longer that and it will continue to become less and less of that. And so, um, the, one of the aspects of the landscaping is that it has been shown to have a calming effect on traffic. That's one of the things we like about it, other than just the pure aesthetics of it. And then to the, the phases, we did break the project down into phases as we realized the, um, the extent of it. And, um, the phase around the intersection there is the first phase and we feel like that's just where most of the safety issues are coming into effect the soonest. And, uh, so that is phase one. Um, phase two is from Orange Street to the county line and then phase three for the western section of the project. Um, and as far as a priority, of course, I mentioned that where all the development is coming right now is around that intersection. So, we feel like that's the highest priority. We, we met with Saint Joe and talked with them about it and they were very gracious in saying, "Listen, we think phase one and phase two are more critical, time critical, our, their development is not gonna reach critical mass for a couple of years, I think that's coming pretty quickly, but, um, we got a little bit of time." Uh, and so, they were very gracious in that. Uh, so that's how we have come up with that order for, for the phasing. The pathways are, and I included two maps because pathways, phases, uh, boundaries are a little bit different from the landscaping because the landscaping boundaries are, uh, predicated upon where median segments are, where median breaks are. While the pathways are more predicated on intersections where people would be entering, uh, entering the, the road on foot or bike. So, that details what those phases are, uh, geographically, if you are, if you want to see that. Uh, and those are the larger maps that I provided for you. So, where we are with the project, and then we'll talk about the funding need. Um, we did request a reduction in the speed limit from FDOT. Um, and they came out and did a study and said it didn't warrant it, but they did tell me they noticed all the buildings coming out of the ground and said, "Please re-request your, resubmit your request when those developments are in, in force and, and up and, and running." Uh, so, we will, we will do that. Um, we're working, we've already submitted a conceptual round of plans to FDOT and gotten a lot of good comments and feedback and made a lot of adjustments based on those. So, we're in, getting very close to getting those to a final point to resubmit to them and also want, want to submit those to Walton County, uh, as well. I mentioned the feasibility study for the pedestrian underpass. And, uh, some of the developments in the area are undergoing some aesthetic improvements as the area, um, the look and feel of the area changes. And, um, we recently, uh, presented to the TDC Advisory Council and requested funding. Uh, they approved for phase one, two hundred thousand in landscaping, uh, funding and, and two hundred and twenty-eight thousand in pathway funding, uh, to add to their proposed budget to you. Um, so, so that's the status of the project. We've, uh, we've been carrying this baby for about nine months, uh, and so, we're at the point, it's tough, it's tough stuff now. Um, not that it's been easy up until this point, but, um, but that's where we are as far as, um, now seeking funding sources. Uh, the, the new page in your packet includes, um, the funding needed for each phase, broken down by landscaping and pathways. We did get some new numbers yesterday and those changed significantly downward. Um, there were a couple of reasons for those changes. Our initial, um, proposal included laying Bermuda sod in all of the center medians and the right-of-ways. Um, we actually got that, a couple of those median segments mowed close and had a couple of landscape companies check the, the turf out. And they said surprisingly, there was a lot more turf grass remaining than they expected. Uh, so, they advised that they felt like we could, if it was mowed frequently and, um, and maintained better, we could get that grass back into a good acceptable condition. So, that cut a lot of money out of the project budget from a material standpoint and a labor standpoint. And then also, the, uh, the Brickman Group, you may know, recently, um, Valley Crest and Brickman merged. And that allowed them to get a lot better pricing on things. So, they reran the numbers with, uh, the Valley Crest pricing that they were able to access and that brought it down as well. So, so that's the reason for the change and we were thrilled to see it. We've really tried to value engineer this and, and, um, and be prudent about, prudent about it. So, um, the, I, I broke it out into two charts here just to show you the total funding need and then the funding needed for phase one after, um, the proposed, uh, budget influx from the TDC funds. Uh, and so, for phase one, that's our biggest focus. We'd love to see phase two get done soon because it is right at the gateway there, um, into the county. But, there's not as much development and change going on in that segment. Uh, but we'd love to see them both get done, we'd love to see it all get done. Uh, the developers are willing to fund the maintenance for phase one. Um, and we've, we have estimates for that to be seventy-two to a hundred thousand dollars a year. Um, they've agreed to do that, so, of course, it, if the county is involved in it, the funding, we would have to have some kind of a structured agreement to put that in place. FDOT has told us that communities have done things like that in the past and they're willing to let us, you know, help us out with how to structure that, some possibilities. Uh, and for future phases, we would plan to approach other developers in those areas and possibly HOAs in those areas. Uh, but, the, the cost, overall cost for phase one is about eight hundred and seventy-two thousand. And about half of that has been, um, proposed in the TDC budget, um, their operating budget for the coming year. So, along the way, as we have been discussing this, we've been asked, um, where would you see the funds coming from within the county? And, uh, we're, we're not experts on the intricacies of the budget for the county. Uh, but, a lot of things have been floated and talked about. Uh, the, uh, pre- use of preservation funds for the landscaping was, was, uh, was brought up as a potential source of funding. We vetted that in, in the community, um, and really found that it's not an appropriate use for those funds. Um, and we're not pushing any source of funds, but that did come up and has had some discussion. And so, um, again, after we've learned what we've learned and heard the feedback we've heard, we feel like that's not an appropriate use of funds for that. Uh, but proportionate fair share fees, uh, and funds have been mentioned as a possibility for the pathways. Part of the project is it will take trips off the road. Um, and again, you, you all know about all this better than we do, but, um, just throwing these things out because we were asked to. And TDC funds always come up as a good, um, as a good source for this, this project. And, and we appreciate the, the commitment already, um, from the Advisory Council or the show of support. So, um, and I, from the prop fair share standpoint, I just included what these developers, the four developers around the, the intersection have put into that, paid into that, um, with their fees. Uh, just for you to have that as information. So, uh, in conclusion, um, you know, we, we just feel like this is a really important project. The people in the area, of course, are excited about it and enthusiastic about it and the people involved. But, in general, um, we feel like this is a great project for the whole community, uh, or the type of project the whole community wants. We saw that flesh out in the TDC opinion surveys that went out. Um, roadway beautification scored very high in that survey. Um, and, and, you know, I know that the goals of the county commission in, in addition are the growth of existing businesses and improving the physical environment in Walton County and, and this, this will help with, with both of those things. Um, so, uh, a lot of work has gone into the project. Um, we, there are countless hours that have been involved. Um, and we wanna see it as a partnership, um, that is good for everybody. Um, and that's one of the reasons that we're reaching out. Um, the developers are committed, as I said, they'll, they have agreed to pay for the maintenance and they have also put some money into it for the design work. Uh, we haven't had to spend a lot of that so far because so much of it has been done pro bono, as I mentioned. Uh, but, but they are committed. Um, we did get the TDC support, almost a unanimous vote to add that to the proposed budget. And so, now we're coming to you, uh, the next stop, uh, and next agency in the process. Uh, and just, uh, understand that your budget is, is, um, your budget hearings are coming up and starting in a couple of weeks. Uh, but we hope that you'll work with us on finding a way to at least get this project started and off the ground. Um, we've got an opportunity to get ahead of the curve here with, um, you know, putting our infrastructure in a position, um, that it needs to be, uh, for coming development. And, um, we've seen how expensive that can be to do, try to go back and retrofit and do that after the fact. We would love to, um, to get this project in the ground before next season. Um, and we will have some permitting time, um, with the county and DOT and we'll have the bid process to go through, um, if county funds are, um, are designated for the project. So, um, so there's a sense of urgency from, from that standpoint, um, because of the way that, obviously, we all know the season works. We'd love to get it, um, get the planning started in the spring, so. So, um, that is it, happy to answer questions, um, and...
Ms. Grantfield?
Ask for your support.
Ms. Moore, I wish, I wish you'd, if the state had come to the, to the board, but, um, you've got an unbalanced budget that you're asking the county to commit funds to. And based upon this latest chart, it's one point three million dollars worth of funds under the county's control, either on Prop Fair Share or from TDC. Uh, second is that the board, several years ago, undertook one of these beautification grants, if you will, and the board ended up eating the cost overruns for the capital outlay and the board ended up eating the costs for maintenance far above beyond what had originally been anticipated for it. And I see you've only got a commitment for funding on phase one for maintenance by the builders, not on phases two or phase three. Uh, the, the budget aspect, and again, you were at the budget workshop that we held in July and none of this had been brought before the board at that time, which could have, could have taken some, some consideration for it. I would, I would recommend that before the board take any action on this, that you come back with a balanced budget and says, "Where, where would we ask that all the money come from? Whether it's from, where are you gonna get it from on the, on the shortfall right now, which is even on phase one over four hundred thousand dollars? Or the, the half million shortfall for all three phases?" Because I hate to see the county commit money to a project that can't go forward because you don't have all the funding that's necessary to complete it. So, I, I think it's premature for the board to take any action on this. And I, I understand you'd like to get this going, lots of things we'd like to do too, but, uh, um, we, we've set our budget in motion. Uh, I don't know that we'd wanna commit all that Prop Fair Share money, the board hasn't had a chance to even, even discuss that. And the same token, uh, the TDC has not even presented to the board for consideration their commitment of this money. So, uh, I appreciate that a lot of work has gone into this, but I would like to see you have and identify, these are all the monies that are gonna take and where they're coming from before the board commit any money on, on our part, either through TDC or for consideration of Prop Fair Share.
When you say all the funds, you mean for all three phases?
Well, first of all, on phase one, you're four hundred thousand dollars short, short right now.
I think we need all three phases.
So, if the board committed any money, where's the rest gonna come from?
And can I follow up on you? I've, and, and I am certainly not opposed to the project, I do think it's a good project and a worthy one. Um, but there, you know, the county has so many needs that we're looking at right now. I'm looking at stormwater throughout the entire county, it's gonna take millions and millions and millions of dollars. Um, where's this, uh, money all gonna come from? I'd like to see the communities that are gonna benefit from this beautification, Rosemary, Alice Beach, Inlet Beach. I'd like to say, I mean, they're going to, to directly benefit because it's gonna look good to the people that are coming to stay in, in those properties. Um, I'd like to see a bigger commitment, um, out of them because it's, it's going to directly benefit, um, that community down there. But, I agree, uh, you know, we, we are stuck now with, with, um, the, the, the maintenance of, of the, um, the medians, um, that cost more than we were told it was gonna cost. And of course, now, we have to absorb that cost. I just want to, uh, to, to make sure that our, our immediate needs for the whole county are met before we commit to, to this. And I say, I, I'm certainly not against the project, I, I think it's a good one and, and will enhance that area. But, you know, um, just like my home budget, I know what I can afford this month and what I can't. And, um, there's some things I just have to leave off. Um, so, I'd like to see more of where's, where, who, who is actually, I wanna hear from these people. Is Rosemary really committed, is, um, Alice Beach, let's see how committed they are.
And I'd like to see the, the phase two and phase three maintenance commitments out there that are other than on the county because, uh...
We can't afford it.
Each year, it's an escalating cost to the county for what originally was represented to us to be a minimal cost.
Okay, I, I have something to say. Um, Sarah, you said that, you know, we're gonna have to meet the needs of the whole county before we can do anything, that...
Well, I'm at stormwater.
Yeah, that's, that's gonna be a, that's a long-range plan. One of the things I like about this project is the fact that, uh, these public-private partnerships are the way to do things. Because the county's never gonna have the funds, we're never gonna have the manpower that they've invested in this. These are really the way to do things. And TDC, I think Advisory Council saw that, um, this is a well-thought-out plan. I don't think, I think a lot of, you know, you, you're not gonna ever have, um, all the funding in hand in the beginning when you need it. I think when things like this begin to happen, you see other things happen and other people bringing up their, uh, properties, which brings up value, which increases taxes. up value, which increases taxes. So, I don't think it's going to just enhance Rosemary and Alice Beach and all those. Those people already are enhanced. I mean, you know, they don't really need, you know, they don't need landscaping in the median to enhance their values because they're pumping out plenty of tax money and plenty of, of, of bed tax money out of those properties. So, my thinking is that we're going to have to partner with the, the private sector to get some of these things done. And this is just, this is a great example of some people who have done a lot of work and have gotten agreements from a lot of different people. And I think Phase One, if nothing else, the safety aspects of Phase One, we've already had a, a person hit at that intersection. So, the thing that happened to Orange County and International Drive in Orlando was they didn't take care of their pedestrians, and now they're the, they're rated the number-one community that has pedestrian fatalities in the state. So, this is something we don't want to be known for. I mean, we, we need to get people out of their cars, in their, on their bikes and walking. And this Phase One, as I see it, is a, is a, is a safety issue, and I would be willing to say that prop share funds can be paid to take cars off the road. So, the pathway fees of two-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand dollars, I think, would well serve this area for, to put in these sidewalks because it's not going to happen unless we get, unless we partner with people. So, I think the TDC partnership, the private sector partnership, the county partnership. So, I, I would like for us to look at, at least funding the pathways from the prop share account of two-hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand dollars. As you can see, some of the people out there have already paid in, and this, and this isn't all of them, some of the people out there have already paid in almost a million dollars in prop share funds. And so, I, I think that we, we're going to have to start looking at these things in, in a much different way and start, start getting ahead of some of these improvements. Stormwater, yes, is important, but I think we're going to look to other funding sources for that. So, I don't know if we would need to bring this back to the board as a, as a vote for the prop share funds for this section, but if not, you know, I'll make that motion now that we at least, and the rest of the money, I think, will come bill. I think that they're not going to, they're not going to start throwing things out there in the ground without the inability to pay for them because...
But what we're doing then is, is, and I understand where you're coming from, and I agree that the public-private partnerships are good, but even at that, you're still two-hundred thousand dollars short from balancing the budget. I mean, we, the county, are required by state statute to have a balanced budget every year. And for us to commit funds to something that doesn't have enough money to get a project going, I think is, is not the smart move at this time. More importantly, for the, for the prop fair share funds, it would, it would require a public hearing. So, yeah, it would have to come, it would have to come back. But I would like to see, as Commissioner Commander had said, where are the other commitments going to come from to fulfill this? Because if we're going to tie up money by making a commitment that can't get spent because you can't raise the rest, we, we have tied up some taxpayers' money, whether it's in the form of prop fair share, whether it's in the form of TDC or, or whatnot, in order to do this. So, I think the smart business aspect of this is to show us how you're going to fund this, not just, well, we can fund three-fourths of it now, but we don't know where the rest is going to come from.
Well, I think one...
I have one more question.
I want to, excuse me. I, I would like to see a balanced budget funding that tells us where each of the phases is going to come from. And then I think, then to me, then it would be prudent for the board to consider the funding, not to just put money into a speculative, this is where we want to go and we might get the money later. This is what happened to us on the previous beautification thing, is that we had a project that was supposed to be a capital outlay of X amount of dollars, and the overruns got absorbed by the county. It was supposed to have X amount of dollars for maintenance, and it, it costs more than it, and the board has absorbed that. I want to see a balanced budget, not one where, well, the board's got this commitment to it, but we don't know where the rest is coming from.
Well, I think one of the points on that, too, is, you know, if, if they can't spend two-hundred-and-something thousand dollars on landscaping, they just won't do the landscaping. I mean, I think that's, that's the point, is that, you know, let's do what, let's fund what we can do. Let's get something done. You know, the, I, I agree, if, if, if they can't fund the two-hundred thousand dollars for landscaping, then they don't do landscaping. So, I, I think that, that, you know, part of this is, is incremental, and I guarantee you, these people out there are serious. You've got some serious business people out there, building some extraordinary projects that are going to increase our tax base tremendously. And I think that at some point, the county needs to step up and say, you know, we're in this together and we, we really want this to happen. We want it to look good.
I think we do. And I think your point on the pathway is a good one, that we ought to take a look at that. And that's just a piecemeal part of this, though.
Well, exactly.
And so, rather than making a commitment to be all in this, if you've identified a portion and then you have a public hearing for that thing, I think that's...
That's, that's what I'm saying, is that, that's what I'm saying. And if...
I can't see committing county money at this time to a broader plan that doesn't have its, its funding base identified.
I, I have one more project. This is a DOT state highway. We're talking about putting in bike paths and sidewalks. Do we have a, in, a letter in hand from DOT saying that they will allow us to do this?
No, we're, as I mentioned earlier, we're in process with that. They're reviewing it right now. There, you know, if, if we had to go back to an on-street sidewalk, you know, we, we could do that. But FDOT is moving away from that, so we feel pretty confident. We have some preliminary feedback from them that the design would work. It's similar to the widening of US 98 project. They're going to have a, a wider path bumped off of the highway with a, with a landscape buffer between. That's what they're trying to go to. But Orange County is one example of many places in Florida that have terrible pedestrian cyclist fatality and injury rates.
I'd love to see a letter in hand from DOT. I mean, it would get me a level of...
Absolutely. I think you have to submit your design plans first before you get a permit from them.
Yeah, I mean, we, we want to go through all of those steps and, and do whatever it takes to, we did get, again, conceptual, preliminary feedback from DOT, and we didn't hear anything like, you know, that, that's not going to work, or that aspect of the project won't work. But, but that's why we're trying to finalize the details of the plan and resubmit it to them, is to get some more, you know, firmer feedback. And, and then, of course, there'd be all kinds of permitting process to go through with them in addition.
So, I, I think what I'd like to do is set a public hearing to look at using prop share funds for at least the pathway portion of the project. And then, if they can't get the landscaping money, you know, then, then they have to, they can't do landscaping. But I think pathways are critical.
That's my motion.
But that's, if I may, a second for discussion purposes. But what you're proposing, as I understand it, is just the one aspect of this, and that is for the pathway, not for anything else with regards to landscaping or any other part of this project.
No, no, no. Phase One, pathways, the, the number you're looking at right here, that's what I'm...
Then I withdraw my second because I'm not in favor of going for anything else on this because we don't have a balanced budget. The pathways that you've identified are, are one unique aspect of it, which you could go with prop fair share. And I think that going with the public hearing approach is the smart thing to do.
Second, my motion to...
If it, if it's limited just to that, yeah, but not, but you, you phrased, you phrased it Phase One, and that's what...
Oh, okay, okay. No, no, that's what I meant.
Prop fair share for the pathway. I, I reinstate my second for that aspect of it only.
For, and I'm sorry, was it for Phase One only or for the whole?
No, no, it's just for the, just for the, not for Phase One. Now, let's get this straight. Let's get this straight.
Yeah, that's what I...
Phase One is the, is the term that you're using in this proposal here. As I understand your, your motion, it's, aside from this, we're looking just at the pathway to be considered for prop fair share. Just the path.
In Phase One.
I, I would, no.
Well, are you saying then, well, Commissioner Felder, are you saying then it should, I'm just trying to understand, it should be for all three phases, for the scope of the project?
I'm saying, is that, first of all, my position is, this is premature for the board to act on with regard to your proposal. As an, as an aside issue, what Commissioner Meadows has identified is, is a very critical safety need and is, is siding apart from, from the fact that it could be part of your, your proposal, and that we can, we can take action on that. But to call this Phase One, I don't want to show that, that the board is taking any action, in my opinion, the board should take any action on this until you come back with a balanced budget for us to consider. Nonetheless, if the proposal that Commissioner Meadows is saying is that, okay, forget calling it Phase One. I just want to have the public hearing in order to, to get money for the pathways. I have no problem with that because indeed, it, it is a safety measure.
Okay, that's my motion.
Then...
Forget Phase One, forget Phase One. Just the pathways. Prop fair shares for path, for two-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand dollars worth of pathways.
Okay.
Right?
And that's my second, just for that.
Just for that.
Okay.
Okay.
So, and can I respond to one question or, or point there, is that, you know, we don't want just one phase of the project to be done at all, but the phases were designed to be able to stand on their own if they needed to. That's, that's part of the reason that we did it, to, to make it more doable. We would, we would love, we plan to continue to pursue this. If we don't get funding for later, future phases now or this year, we're going to keep pursuing it into the future.
And that's the time to come back to the board when you've got a balanced budget and ask for the board's commitment for more money.
But I think you're saying balanced budget. This, this is a cost estimate. This, this isn't a budget that you balance. This is a, this is a cost, this is, this is a funding...
Okay. Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Pose. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just for clarity, the... Clarity. The first available date for that public hearing will be September 23rd at nine o'clock here, and we can...
Works for me.
That works. That'll be the date we set.
I think we should have it down there because it's, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a...
That's fine, but...
It's a District One, District Five, you know, we're, we're kind of, we're going to go to the middle of the road down there, so I think that's important.
Then we'd have to move it to October, October, October 14th, which we don't have time to advertise for the next meeting in South Walton. So, that's good. We will establish that day.
October 14th.
Yeah, five o'clock or thereafter.
All right.
Four o'clock, whatever it needs to be.
14th is building up fast.
Okay, uh, let's see where we're at.
How about, how about break?
Well, we got, we're almost done. Is there any other additional public comments? Let's start.
Approaching your own.
For the record, Alan Osborne, I want to continue where I stopped earlier. Anyway, you didn't follow the process that you told me you were going to follow the other night, and I just don't know what to do about it. The other issue is this. You, you've, you had a finding that you've approved. It's your finding on Sandeston that was out of compliance. During that testimony, you took a position that it was out of compliance and that the 1984 settlement agreement and that 90 adoption of the ordinances were legal, and that was your position, that the development should be developed to the 1984 standards. I want you to know that, I want you to be aware of, that you have a, a planning board member who opposed your position during the sworn testimony, Mr. Patton, and he took the position that the development should be developed under the 1976 order, despite the fact that he signed personally the 84 agreement that that would apply. So, you have, you're being sued over whether 1984 or 1976 applies. And you've got a board member that thinks 1976 applies, and that's his formal opinion. Even at, at the board, he stated that. And he's the one recommending these approvals and bringing these motions forward for you guys to approve on that development. And you think that's a little bit an issue for you guys? Because I'm not suing you over those standards. Somebody else is. But the guy who took the developer's position in a formal hearing is the one who's making the motions for you guys to approve these further projects. I don't know how you can't see that that's a danger. And I want you to think about what those definitions do. If y'all plan to bring us all into compliance by adopting a bunch of definitions that change everything, you lose. You've not done anything for the people. You have not enforced any rules at all. In fact, they're not, might as well not be rules if you're just going to change them every time. Now, if you guys want to address that, I, I don't know what to do. And the last thing is, why, nobody answered me, why, why have we unadopted the five-minute policy that we adopted years ago for public comments? Is there a reason? Do you guys think you could answer most of your issues in three minutes if I put you up here? I bet not. I bet not. So, that's, that's the position. You've got, you've got an appointed board, and one of the members who's making these positions and these recommendations has a different position from what the board has ratified. And I think that's an issue. Has to be. Last thing, I'm going to leave. The, you got the Hilton coming on tonight. You've approved about forty thousand more square feet of commercial. I think there's another fifteen thousand. And I'm not going to stay here and argue with you. Do whatever you want. But you take in mind that you've told one developer that he's overbuilt on commercial space, and in a matter of time, you're going to approve fifty-five thousand more feet of it while you're telling one guy no. You're creating problems for yourself.
Thank you. All right, let's take a break to, oh, I'm sorry. Come on. I didn't see you back there.
My name is Richard Ryan, 387 North Wall Street, Inlet Beach. I, you know, just think that, like Cindy Meadows said, you keep putting things off and, and, you know, you get beyond things. And right now, you're behind. That corridor, that area is a gateway to the county. It's not a gateway to 30A. It's a gateway to the county. People are coming out of Bay County. They're going into Walton County. They see the sign, and then they drive through Inlet Beach. And they look and they say, oh, this is what Inlet Beach is. I think I'll just keep going. You need to do something about that. These are your gateways. The, these are the first impression that people get coming in. And Phase One would at least give you something. You know, I, I've been there over thirty years, and I've heard comments time and time again about that very same thing on 98 there. Now, when are you going to do this? When are you going to do that? Yeah, well, that's my question. When are we going to do it? And I think now's the time to get started. And we can talk about what we could do ten years down the road, fifteen years down the road. We could say, well, until all that's together, we're not going to do anything. That doesn't work. You, you have to start off with something, and then you have to build from that. People see that, and then they'll say to themselves, oh, yeah, this is worth doing. Then we can get a whole lot more people involved in doing that. That's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, let's take recess till five minutes till eleven. Ten minutes.
You're welcome.
Okay, Mr. Dyas?
Mr. Chairman, we have several items this morning. We have two requests to continue. Shall I go to, go to those first?
Yes, go ahead and get them out of the way.
Okay. The first request to continue is number two on your agenda item. It's the recreational plat fee amendment for the land development code. We're requesting this to be continued until October 14th, just to give it timing to, so it can coincide along the same lines as the comp plan amendment, which takes a little bit longer. So, we're requesting that to be continued until October 14th.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, the last one we're asking to continue is the number six, the last item on your agenda, the West Shore Phase Two plat. Got a performance bond issue we're trying to work out, and we're requesting that be continued until September 23rd.
So moved.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carries.
And Mr. Chairman, with that, we bring this to the first item on the agenda, legislative item, is the comprehensive plan recreation plat fee ordinance. This is just, we are requesting to, as the board directed us to, to increase the, the percentage for the plat fee recreation from five percent to six percent of the gross value of the subdivision. And this is a transmittal hearing to the state.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, number three on your agenda is the limited lodging ordinance scrivener's error. We just have a, some, a couple of letters that are off in how it's formatted. So, we're asking for approval to correct the scrivener's error.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, number four on our agenda is the agricultural use ordinance. This is an adoption hearing. I'll ask Mr. Tim Brown, Senior Planner...
I'll ask Mr. Tim Brown, Senior Planner, to come up and, uh, um, cover these.
Good morning. Tim Brown with Planning and Development. This is a comprehensive plan text amendment for rural residential, rural density, and rural village to add back in agriculture, aquaculture, and civil cultural uses. When they did the year-based amendments in two thousand and eleven, they took out those uses from these three districts, and these have historically been agricultural areas because they're in the rural parts of the county. So, we've had some, some complaints about, I've always did agriculture, now you're telling me we can't? So, we're putting back in what was taken out in two thousand and eleven. This was transmitted to the state in May. It came back from the state with no comments.
Okay. Questions?
A quick question.
I think it would be complete in, um, under item D, intensity allowed, you've, you've got the initials F A R and I S R, which are not defined. I would think that it would be important to include that.
Well, they are, they are defined in our Land of Elma code.
Okay, for this ordinance?
But this is the way the whole comprehensive plan is formatted. This is the exact same format.
For my own edification, what are the initials?
Uh, floor area ratio, it's the amount of the building, the total building, not just the footprint, the total building to the total size of the lot. I S R is the impervious surface area, all the, all the, uh, asphalt, concrete, anything that's impervious. That's the ratio with the rest of the, of the lot. You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
I feel I'm tired of letters.
Any other questions?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Got a motion and a second.
Just make a comment. And some of you may have received some correspondence regarding whether this was the reaction to the chicken situation in the backyard in Oakley's County. It absolutely is not. So, just going on record, this, this didn't fix it.
They can have chickens in, uh, Fisher and Bell's district, but no.
I don't mind in the district, but I believe, separately, we have zone, and this is getting off a little bit, but there are residential areas, I mean zoned residential, not rural, that people have come and put livestock and fowl in that we're going to have to address separately. And we'll bring that back at a later meeting.
But there was apparently some concern that this was taking action to allow those things, and just want to be clear that that's not the case.
That's just, that's just Oakley's County.
There have been communities who've adopted what they call urban chicken regulations, where you can actually live in a city and have chicken.
As long as they're urban chickens.
We got a motion and a second.
Fowl.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, the last item on our agenda is a quasi judicial hearing.
Anyone anticipates testifying regarding the quasi judicial matter before the board, would you please stand and raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give before this board will be the truth? Thank you. Does anyone have any objections to the notices for this hearing as published? And Commissioner, has anyone had any ex parte or conflict conflicts?
Mr. Chairman, I have a continuing conflict with the Sandeston D R I issues, and therefore, for business reasons, I am recusing myself. I'll, I'll go get, I'll go get prepared for our, our dousing.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, with that brings number five on the agenda, which is a Sandeston Hilton Spa and Edition in Exhibit Hall. If I could, I'll ask Renee Bradley to come up and give you a brief on this, uh, project.
Ms. Renee.
Good morning. Renee Bradley for Walton County Planning and Development. This is Sandeston Hilton Exhibit Hall and Spa Expansion. Bob Earwood and Emerald Coast Associates are requesting for an expansion to the Sandeston Hilton. The expansion will consist of an increase of eleven thousand nine hundred and ninety square feet to the existing Exhibit Hall area, an increase of one thousand five hundred and fifty-eight square feet to the existing spa area, an increase of one thousand twenty-three square feet to the fitness area, and four hundred and eight square feet of bathroom area. The total increase to the spa area is two thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine square feet. The parcel is fifteen point thirty-seven acres. The parcel's located south of U S Highway ninety-eight. The parcel's on one oh seven of the Sandeston Development Regional Impact. All technical review comments for this project been met except for the following condition. The applicant is required to amend Development Order thirteen zero zero one zero 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 five three to reduce the hotel units by four units prior to any further construction of this development order. No building construction has begun on this project at this time. Now, they do have a parking garage that has been completed, but no construction on the building. This condition will require letter of approval from Sandeston Investments per the two thousand and two eighteen ordinance that states, prior to making any internal like-kind transfer within the D R I, the proposed transfer, with the exception noted below, must first be approved by Sandeston. Uh, the exception can, was pertaining to the Howard Group property. We have received that letter from Sandeston Investments, and we have given a copy to the clerk, and I believe each of you have a copy. Uh, the applicant is required to adhere to the following environmental comments, which there are four. The proposed development site is located within the Wildlife Conservation Zone. All exterior light sources within the zone shall comply with the requirements of Chapter five point ten zero zero Walton County L D C. In accordance with five ten point oh one, two long wavelength flamps are required in fixtures in line of sight of the beach. At least one fixture on Exhibit Hall and three fixtures on the Spa Edition appear to be within the line of sight of the beach. Number two, please be advised that all exterior lighting associated with proposed building will be reviewed for compliance at the building permit stage. Number three, please be advised that all glass windows, walls, and doors must be tinted glass that has an inside-to-outside transmitance value of forty-five percent or less. Number four, the proposed development site is located within the White Sands Protection Zone. All development shall comply with the requirements of Chapter four point oh seven of the Walton County Land Development Code. Staff has received no written comments on this project, but did hear opposition to this project on the fourteenth Planning Commission meeting. Uh, the objections was for the view corridor of the beach from the Tides condominium anomalies. And I believe most of those were on the second floor, and I'll have the applicant address that issue for you. Staff recommends approval of the Sandeston Hilton and Exhibit Hall expansion with the aforementioned conditions and environmental comments. And that's all I have for you.
Renee, um, this authorization of like-kind transfer, can you explain that to me, what that means?
Yes, sir. In the two thousand and two eighteen ordinance, there's a provision in there that as long as there is no increase in traffic and the use is the same, in which we consider hotel and the spa used to be commercial use, that they can do a like-kind transfer without having to go back to the state or get any other approval. But we can approve it at the staff level, and staff does approve this change.
I do have a question. The people that are objecting because of the view, are they guaranteed in writing anywhere that they will have a perpetual view?
Not to my knowledge, ma'am.
Okay. Does the applicant wish to speak?
Good morning, members of the board. My name's Dean Burgess. I'm with Emerald Coast Associates. I am the, uh, agent to the applicant and engineer of record on the project. Um, we have read the staff report and agree with the conditions that are, that are outlined in the report and, uh, feel that we, uh, can comply with all of those conditions without any, any concerns. If there's any questions, uh, with regard to the specifics of the development, I'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Any questions?
Yeah. For my edification, and I'm sorry, this is trivial.
Go ahead.
Um, why the tent of the glass?
Um.
Oh, okay, so it can't be seen at night?
Yeah, interior lighting can't, uh, attract the turtles, correct.
Thank you, thank you.
Question two on, um, page eight of eight of the staff's comments. Under the conditions, they kind of split this up into two phases. They said Phase One shall be approved, and then they said Phase Two, the Spa Edition would either have to receive a letter of approval for the, or either a like, an E two change. So, is that letter of approval, is that the one from Sandeston? It's either or, or an E two change? Is that what you're saying?
It was a concern whether that letter would be available, um.
Oh, okay.
In time for this meeting. Of course, it obviously has, so.
Okay. So, you're not looking at an E two change?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Okey dokey.
Any public comments?
And so, this is the, Mr. Attorney, this is a, it's kind of like you're just kind of moving the, the approved uses and square footage around. You're not adding to it, you're just moving it around.
That's what I understand the edification is.
Oh, okay. So, it's not a new development or additional space? Okay.
And also, it's within their purchased, uh, intensity rights within the Sandeston D R Is, I understand.
Okay. Okay. That's all I wanted to know.
Is there any other comments?
I could clarify, Commissioner. Basically, there's no intensity change on this parcel whatsoever. We're giving up four units to be able to add the spa.
Okay.
There's nothing being added.
And are we looking at this as a part of the overall D R I, or is it a, another?
No, ma'am.
Separate section of the D R I, like, the, like, so we treated the building S and the Howard Group as a separate section of the D R I. Is this a separate section, or is this?
This is a separate section as well, ma'am, because it's under totally different ownership.
Okay. So, we're going to split all these things up?
The, the developers have, the way I understand it from D E O, the developers, each developer who owns the property within the D R I have certain intensity rights. They can continue to develop separate and apart from the Sandeston D R I developer.
Okay.
And additionally, there was no compliance issues on parcel one oh seven.
Okay.
Within that parcel, that's correct.
Okay.
It is very hard to get my mind around that concept. It is.
Okay. Any public comments? Seeing none, what's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve?
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 You get the vote. I think it's four ayes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, four ayes. Okay. Motion carries.
That's all we have.
All right. We stand adjourned. All right, extend the adjourn.